Heavenly fathers, as we're prepared to end of the year, we just asked for your... We pray unto you our gratitude for all the incredible things that you've allowed this city to experience, for the opportunities to serve its public. And we ask, as we go into 2018, that your wisdom will be bestowed upon each and every council member, so that they may best serve the community, Father. We love you, we praise you. Amen.
Ah, by Laura's fancy clock up there at six o'clock, and we'll call this order again. We move it at six o'clock, straight up and down. Roll call.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
Counselor Lucero?
Here.
Counselor Vasquez?
Here.
Counselor Reynolds?
Here.
Here.
Mayor. I didn't recognize you.
Police got me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold on. Walk too far into parade. Who blew up the agenda?
Chair, I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Second.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Vasquez?
Yes.
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Citizens to address, Sarah Austin, Carrot Express, you're up first. So you're gonna go with her too now, Paul?
I am, yeah. We're talking about the same thing. So, yeah.
I have some paperwork that you guys need.
We're passing around, this is a new skip, our new rate fares for the Carrot Express, and a new service map for the Carrot Express. And what we're here for tonight is to ask, as you know, the county approved $26,000 as their part for the Carrot Express. They normally approve $54,000, so there's a shortfall of $26,000. So what we're here for tonight is to ask if the city council would be willing to split that $26,000 with the Village of Malon, with $13,000 apiece. We don't know if we'll need all that money or not. We feel that these increases in these fares, and a smaller service map that we're going to implement in January, will do two things. One, it'll increase the amount of money coming into the Carrot Express and funding the Carrot Express, and the other thing, it'll somewhat reduce the expenses a little bit as well. And so, one of the things that we'd like to do is, is if the City of Grants is interested in sharing those costs with the Village of Malon, then we would ask that in January, one of your city council meetings, if you would put it on the agenda, we would need a resolution to that effect.
Questions? Sidney? Why are we taking students to school?
The public school buses are only allowed to take them to and from one address. And the three that we take in the morning, the school buses won't go down the road to get them into, to and from school. And one of the little girls, her parents do not drive, so the only way she can go to school is if we take her.
Sometimes these kids, instead of going to their home in the afternoon, they go to their grandma's, or to another relative and things, and so, at that point, they use the Carrot Express for that. They do pay a fee, right?
They do pay the fee. Yes, they do.
I have a question. The pool, right, is that from Malon Elementary to the pool?
Right now, that's the only school that calls us for that, but it will be available to all schools that want to use that.
Futures Summer Program, what are you talking about?
Future Foundations and the Malon Fun Club. Those are the two that we love right now.
And it runs to where for that? From the houses to the fun club, and from the houses to futures?
Yes.
We're starting to implement a route type of...
That's what I wanted to see.
Yeah, we're starting to implement a route, and she just started it. Not a lot of people know about it. We're gonna run it for a while, and see if we can, if we can get more people using the buses as far as a route, because one of the things they have to do now, is they have to call in advance, and some of these... So what do they have to get now, like, 24 hours?
24-hour notice, right.
24-hour notices. Where if we start using the route, then we may have more people using it, because they'll know that the bus will be coming around every so many minutes, and going around in the route, you know, to the stores, the hospital areas, the city hall, county buildings, some of these places that they normally take people. And see if we can try to generate our, have people get in the habit of looking for the buses at these different stops and stuff, and they'll be around there. They just kinda go around, and similar to the buses in Albuquerque, you know, where they'll go, come across the stops, and they have a regular schedule. Before, I know they used to do that, and they would stop at a, at a stop, and they would wait there for like 20 minutes, and said, "No, we don't wanna do that, we just wanna hit that stop and keep going."
Okay, now I see this one here going up Mount Taylor to the trailhead. Why are we gonna be delivering people to the trailhead?
You guys were the host...
And you gotta go back and pick 'em up.
You guys were the host city for the Continental Divide hikers, and that's really the only people we take up there.
They're the Continental Divide.
Right. In order for them to receive their deal, they have to hike from here, guys. They can't get a ride up there. They can't get a ride anywhere. They can get a ride when they're inside the city limit of the town that they're in. Other than that, the minute they walk out the city limit, if they accept a ride, they no longer qualify for that.
Are all these, all these hikers hiking it for certification?
No. Most of them aren't.
No, they, they can accept a ride if they want to. Most of them don't.
Well, most of them don't, because they know if they do, they void their getting the, whatever it's called, the trail deal that they get whenever they complete the trail. And in order to get the Grand Slam, where they do the Appalachians, the Rocky, and the Pacific, they have to complete all three of them. And that means no ride anywhere. And I'm against taking anybody to the trailhead, just like I'm against taking them to Zuti Canyon, to Ice Cave, or to El Moro, or anything like that.
We do also take Mount Taylor Quad up there one time a year.
You betcha. The quad's different, though.
Okay, so that's also on the...
You're talking about running this thing almost every day through the summer up to the, to the trailhead, if people wanna go there. Okay? And that's just insane, because it's taking them out of town for 37 minutes minimum, if not an hour. And the people that we're here to service is our public.
Yes, sir.
Our public, from here in the county. Not people that came here from Washington DC to go see El Moro, or came here to hike the Continental Divide Trail.
We did tap off our service area to marker 82, which is right past San Fels, so we won't no longer be going up.
Yes, I saw that one.
That far.
The Thomas Road?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I think you guys are doing a good job. I've seen improvement over the last few years, and I think it's a good service, and a service that's needed in our community, and I would support a resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chosse Lepine, thank you for the light parade, for the Veterans Day, for everything that you guys do. Come on up, Ms. Martinez. You might as well get a little recognition, too. And anybody else from that mainstream board that's here, come on up.
So, as you just said, last weekend was the 21st Annual Light Parade. We were very happy with all the turnout, the people and results. And we'd like to thank the city for all of their help, and the use of city workers to get the parade, the area cleaned up and lit, and beautiful again this year. Mike Lewis, we'd like to thank, he helped light our luminarios. And Manny and Mayor Hicks were in our parade, so we appreciate everything you do. We had 28 floats this year in the parade, and served over 900 cookies and 30 gallons of hot chocolate.
And it wasn't enough?
It was... We were close, so I didn't have much left over, so we were happy.
It was nice, guys, and I really appreciate what you do. I wasn't here for the Veterans Day deal, I did shoot the big old buck down there on Veterans Day morning.
Awesome.
So, I had him hanging in the tree about the time you guys did the Freedom March, and we were eating tenderloins about that time. It was fantastic. But I really appreciate, because every one of the veterans said that it was just a fantastic thing.
Great. We hope so. We enjoyed doing that for the veterans that wanna continue and expand it.
As veterans, we appreciate, without a doubt, guys. And I appreciate that light parade, I had a blast.
Great. Yeah, I mean, I don't know if you got to see the luminarios at the Riverwalk that they lit.
Yes.
St. Teresa's kids helped decorate them, and it turned out awesome. Next year, at the same time, it's lighting candles in memory of a lost loved one, so we hope to maybe expand it to that, and have more permanent lights over there next year, and bigger displays.
Thank you, guys.
Nice haircut.
Thank you.
Now, you should've seen the cadets getting their crap up there on stage. Thank you, guys, very much. Okay, first thing is organizational items. Mike sent me a text that he was resigning as a mayor pro temp, and I would like to recommend Manny to take that over for Mr. Lewis.
Mayor, I move that we elect Manuel Vazquez as mayor pro temp.
Second.
Your second?
Counselor Reynolds, Manny? Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. The next one is the appointments to the council of governments. This is your two-week notice, we'll do that at our next meeting on the 28th of December. And I'm gonna recommend Manny for the council of governments, too. Okay? Just so everybody knows. Okay, public comment and discussion of our charter. Compliance, anybody out there wanna talk about our charter? Anybody? Going once, going twice, going three times. Anybody up here wanna talk about our charter? Sally, you're up.
Cool. Thank you, Laura, for inviting us here. I'm Sally Sanchez, I'm the Director of Roberta's Place Domestic Violence Program, and this is Jess Cooper, our Administrative Coordinator with Roberta's Place. I think everybody knows. So Laura asked me to come and give an update on Roberta's Place, and in front of you, I've placed our brochure, and it kind of details, well, it kind of gives you an idea of the services that we provide. And also, our statistics for federal fiscal year 17, so the one that just ended October, or September 30th. So you can see that our total shelter for that fiscal year was 136 clients, and that's men, women, and children. Oh, okay. Oh. 136 children. 95 women, and one male. And our non-residentials, we had 63 women and 15 children for non-residential services. You don't have to be in our Roberta's Place shelter in order to receive services. We have numerous services that we provide to non-residentials. Counseling, domestic violence education, case management, legal advocacy, all kinds of case management, helping people find homes, you know, helping them get public benefits, helping them get ready to find a job. These are all services, any service that we provide in shelter will provide for non-residentials. Another huge part of our program is our batter's intervention program, we're the only state-certified program in Cibola County to provide batter's intervention programs. The courts are mandated, anyone who is convicted of a domestic violence crime must do 52 weeks of batter's intervention program. And Roberta's Place is the only program that provides that here in Cibola County, who've been doing that for about 12 or 13 years now. And we've had 53 males and 10 females in the last fiscal year that have come to our program for services. We had 2,122.3 shelter nights. That's, we count the children as well as the, as the women and men who stay in the shelter. We served over 6,000 meals, and then all of the other services.
2,000, was that for the year?
That's for that fiscal year.
And it's important to note that we don't charge anything for any of the services that we provide. Everything that, doesn't matter if you're an offender or you're a victim coming through our organization, we wanna make sure that folks get the help that they need, so everything is free.
Roberta's Place is one of the only batter's intervention programs in the state of New Mexico who does not charge the participants for services. It's always been my feeling that they have to pay for that, as well as their court fines and fees, and their compliance fines and fees, and everything else. You're taking food off the table. You're punishing the children and, and the families.
Sally, where do you guys keep most of your funding?
The major funder, we have a contract with Children, Youth, and Families Department, Domestic Violence Unit. That money is mandated by the legislature to go specifically into, into the Domestic Violence Unit. Our contract with them is about $201,000 a year. Now, about six years ago, we were getting $265,000 from them, but that was cut several years ago, and we haven't been able to make it up at this point. We have a federal grant with victims of crime, and that's about $100,000, it's $98,000. We have a grant with the Navajo Nation to serve Navajo clients, and that's about $40,000 a year. We also have a grant with the Children and Adult Food Program with the, with the state of New Mexico. It's, it's a USDA, it, money passes through to CYFD, and so we're able to provide food and good nutrition to our shelter clients.
So your budget is about $400,000?
Sure, it's $401,000.
Oh, sorry, missed it by a moment.
Good guess. Good guess. And of course fundraising.
What does the city provide?
City provides our shelter.
So the shelter is owned by the city, and our maintenance department does most all of the maintenance work there.
This is a nice kitchen compared to what it was when I had convicts out there moving all kinds of stuff for you, girl. This is a major improvement.
So. Our federal grant with victims of crime through the New Mexico Crime Victims Recreation Commission had some additional money that wasn't used, and they send out an RFP for a wish list. And so last December, I submitted a wish list to have the kitchen redone.
It looks great.
And, so they didn't give me the full $15,000 we asked for, so we were able to move some money in our Navajo Nation grant, and in our fundraising account, and we were able to come up with the additional $5,000 to get that done. You'll notice in the picture that the backsplash is not done.
Yes.
And I said...
It's like heat wallpaper or something.
Something. I did submit a grant for $3,000 to get that done, and got noticed today that that was turned down. So, we're still looking.
That's good.
Sally, I really liked her microwave oven.
You know why I'm saying that.
Yeah, I know. It's downstairs.
It looks good.
It's in the downstairs kitchen. It got taken care of, thank you. And then Jess is gonna tell you, you know, some of the other things that we're involved in, and some of the other things that we do.
Yeah, so, I first wanted to thank Sarah Austin, and she's, did she already leave?
Yes.
She, the carrot has been a tremendous resource for our program and our participants. I would say at least 90% of our folks that come in have no transportation at all. And a good 15 to 20% of our non-residential clients also need transportation assistance of some sort, and primarily to do stuff in grants, right? They've gotta drop off applications at low-income housing, go to ISD, and work with human resources, drop off employment applications, I mean, any number of things that you can imagine. And Sarah has been invaluable to us. We can shoot her a text, and she's there, right? And it's been amazing. I did wanna talk a little bit about some of the committees and stuff that we do locally. We participate in the CYFD Multidisciplinary Team. Our counselor is part of the Substance Abuse Task Force that Lori V. Hill has gotten started. We go to the Justice Partner Meetings at Magistrate Court. Our legal advocate and case manager is one of the main players for Drug Court, which is a weekly meeting that she participates in to kinda help the clients that are in both programs, both DB and Drug Court, make sure that they get through their program over there, and get the resources that they need through us. And that's just our local stuff. Statewide, we do some other big things. We are part of the New Mexico Coalition Against Domestic Violence, of which Sally is a board member again. I think this will be her third, fourth...
Third.
Third term to serve on the board. She's also the policy chairperson for all of the policy committee, and on the Intimate Partner Death Review Team, which she was specifically requested to be a part of, which is a monthly meeting in Albuquerque with the New Mexico CVRC, where they review, you're gonna have to get more information on this.
Review violent deaths that have either been adjudicated, or the cases have been closed, so that we're able to provide recommendations to law enforcement service providers, mental health providers. There's a report that comes out every January, it's provided to all of the legislators for the state of New Mexico, and anybody else that requests a copy of it.
And we also participate in the network. I'm on the Stirring Committee, which is a statewide meeting that they have quarterly, and we talk about current issues, national issues, things that are happening locally, and that stuff kinda gets spread out, so that everybody in the state is up to date on what's going on nationally. Some things I also wanted to talk about was fundraising in our community. We have had tremendous support from local businesses, which has been amazing, and it's hard to fundraise in grants, I don't know. It's hard. We're a small community, and there is a lot of organizations that need help, and that are fundraising, and it's not an easy task or endeavor by any means. And we have had some pretty regular supporters that have really helped any major event that we have put on, so I think that's pretty amazing. The Legion has recently started doing an annual benefit run with us in October. We have started kind of coupling that with the Fall Fiesta, and the Fall Fiesta Chamber has brought in domestic violence awareness to the Fall Fiesta, which has been great. We get a lot of outreach doing that. New Mexico State University has also started an event over October for New Mexico, or for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, which has been wonderful. And the Rodeo Association brought in the Man Up Campaign. For those folks that went to the rodeo the last two years, I don't know if you got to see the flag, and Sally and I out there in our purple shirts, but we were the first program in the state to be a part of the Man Up Campaign, which was pretty amazing. And last year was our second year, and this year, hopefully, will be our third. And we have the thrift store, which we think is a pretty good community resource. We are able to provide a location for folks that need to do community service, either through the courts, through New Mexico Works, compliance, where else comes, who else comes to us? That's about it, right, for... But we are also able to provide clothing, personal care items for anybody. They don't have to be a client. If somebody comes in and they're dealing with trauma or disaster in their life, they can come in and let us know, and we can help them out. And that's pretty much what I got.
Questions?
How many staff do you all have?
Thank you for asking. I was gonna say that. Roberta's Place right now employs 14 people.
How many counselors do you have?
I have one counselor.
Is that part of the program, or may it be a contract?
Yes, it is. Absolutely. We have a counselor, we have a DB educator, we have case managers, and then everybody is an advocate. Everybody does direct services. Jess and I do direct services.
Manny?
Good job, Sally.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for what you do out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Okay, approve the regular seat count for a minute.
Mayor, I move to approve. The regular seat count for November 13th?
Second.
Your second.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Vasquez?
Yes.
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Forz Grin, design services for the headworks facility and the septic dump station. Smile, guys, it ain't that bad.
Mayor, Council, we're building this $50 million wastewater plant, and we have some issues that lead up to it, this being one of them. The headworks facility, there's some, it's just basically deteriorating under the facility, and it just, it leads to... And the, and the new upgraded dump station is for sure necessary for this wastewater treatment plant, otherwise it could affect the new plant, and it's like building a new house, and not putting correct targets, I guess. So anyway, we've got Clay from Forz Grin. If you guys have, he could give you guys more details if you got the light.
Questions for Clay? Sidney? Manny? Rick?
So I'm assuming this septic dump station isn't part of the wastewater treatment plant, or is it newly built?
So if we build it over by the plant, it can be included as a part of that project, right?
Yes.
So Clay, refresh my memory.
Can we just add on to it, right?
We, we got a loan for approximately $15 million, and this change order will fall under that money that we have already?
Yeah, that's correct. As long as, we can use that money as long as we keep it within the boundaries of the fine wastewater treatment plant.
Who uses the septic?
Um, there's three companies, Potco, Gallup, Gallup Dumping in Old West.
They pay?
Right now, I think they pay a minimal fee. I believe it's something like $500 a year.
Who dumps the most?
Um, in the middle of that, probably Potco. It's gonna toss it between Potco and Old West. So, the reason we had to do, put it in the dump station is because we're converting it to anaerobic bacterias, and septic, septic is just not, it's gonna upset the process. So, so the theory is, we're gonna put in a holding tank, we'll be able to have the dump truck, the dumpsters come in, dump it in the tank, and then slowly meter it back into the, into the wastewater treatment plant, so we're not upsetting the, we're not upsetting the process in the treatment plant itself. If we do it the way they do now, they just dump it all in at once, which is fine and will goons, but in a, in an anaerobic environment, it's gonna, it's gonna hurt the process, and you'll have a hard time, the operators will have a hard time maintaining it. As part of this, though, we'll, as part of the current project, we're putting in a gate, and so, our plan is to modify that. We'll go into the research, figure out what kind of net loading they're having, these septic haulers are, are having, and then we'll be able to start, then it'll give the city the ability to start charging a more representative rate.
That's what I was gonna say, we need to look at helping the septic dumps, because you got, you've also got people to come in with their RVs and dump, too, right?
Um, I haven't, I don't think they're dump, they dump up there, do they? No.
We've never had an RV dump up there?
Who said that with the RV thing?
But that comes to us eventually, anyway.
So do they pay by the gallon, or what?
Right now, they're gonna pay, they're paying by the, by the year.
By the year. Whatever they dump, they're paying $1,000 for, for the whole year. So they could dump 500,000 gallons for $1,000. That's crazy.
Yeah.
Especially when we're charging everybody out, yeah. We need to do something there.
Especially if someone's dumping a lot more than someone else.
Yeah, so, so we can set it up. Um, right now, we're just at the preliminary part of this design, um, because, you know, we haven't gotten the change order yet. But we, we have two options. Uh, one option is you just charge per, per load regardless of how many gallons it is, which is probably gonna be the most cost-effective way. Then you'll have to leave it up to the, to the haulers to, uh, maximize their, their trucks for dumping. Or you could also go to a per gallon, um, dumping, but that would involve a lot more instrumentation.
Do you have a scale out there?
No, it would, it's just, it would be, most of those trucks are three thousand gallons. You'd set it up, you could set up a code for each truck depending on its size. And then every time they enter the plant, they have to enter that code, it gets logged in the system and then you can bill accordingly, once a month or what have you.
Probably just per gallon, every load, exactly.
Yeah, that's the most you can...
Just like we do at the waste station. You go out there and you pay for what you dump.
I think you'd have diminishing returns if you're putting all the equipment in to measure per gallon, so.
Explain the metering, you're talking about metering, the one from the...
That meters the, the water that's coming, correct me if I'm wrong, but it meters the, the waste that's coming from that tank into the aerated spot so that we don't have the malfunction of getting too much in.
Yeah, you don't get a big slug. So instead of putting three thousand gallons in, in five minutes, we would put a hundred gallons.
Five gallons, three minutes or whatever it is, to make sure the system aerates and keeps it proper.
Yeah, the other part of that that you, you were talking about was the Headworks building. Uh, when we went in to start doing the retrofit on it, we discovered that it was, uh, it was falling apart.
Concrete's coming apart fast, yeah.
It's structurally gonna fail, uh, really soon, so.
What is Headworks?
We've been lucky it hasn't failed.
Headworks is the, it's the building that where the raw sewage first comes in, so it's...
Where that grinder's at and all that?
Yeah.
Which one they call the head?
Yeah, and it's the worst place on the entire plant too. You have the most noxious, uh, odors there and it's the most corrosive environment on the plant as well. So, it, it's better just, you know, we're looking at just doing a bare bones, um, building right next to it, just as small as possible, no, you know, no fancy features, just something to avoid the wastewater from freezing, so.
So is there an amount the council needs to approve?
Yeah, right now, we, we're asking for fifty-four thousand dollars for the design. Um, I've put together the, when we put together the, uh, amendment number eight, that will get us, uh, that will get us through the design and, uh, up, and then, uh, the bidding process for it. We anticipate to put this in as a change order with, uh, the existing contractor out there, Smith Co. Um, hopefully, we can get the design out, um, early next year. Again, it should be a pretty, pretty straightforward design. And if we can get it done, our substantial completion's middle of July next year. So if we can get it fit in at that time, it's gonna be a big cost savings, um, for the city. Um, I don't know how that's, if that's gonna happen or not. Obviously, the contractor's gonna want a more, want more time on their substantial completion, but I think we have, if we get it done in time, I think we have a pretty good shot at, uh, getting it done by July.
The total here is fifty-two seven seventy.
Yeah, that's correct.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion, that's what we need. And it's not like we're going out of what we already planned on paying on this thing.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve, uh, item number three, design services for the wastewater treatment plant to Forzgrin in the amount of fifty-two thousand seven hundred seventy.
My second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Senator Vasquez, Councilor DeSaro. Councilor Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, NMD loan ordinance.
So item number four, the council approved, um, a couple of meetings back and we discovered that we didn't follow the proper procedure. We're supposed to advertise any ordinance for fifteen days prior to council approval, and that did not happen, so that the public is aware that we're, uh, taking on a debt. And so, we have advertised it now for the proper timeframe and so we are asking for your reapproval.
For the reapproval of this, okay?
Reapproval.
So, could I have a motion for reapproval?
I make a motion for the reapproval.
Thank you, second. Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Senator Vasquez? Senator DeSaro?
Yes.
Councilor Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Resolution to fund the Pond Liney project.
And this is the same theme, it's a resolution supporting that ordinance.
Same one. Entertain a motion for resolution number seventeen fifteen seventy-three. Somebody make a motion.
I move that we approve resolution seventeen dash one five seven three.
Second.
My second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Vasquez? Councilor DeSaro? Councilor Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Next one, NMD loan ordinance authorizes the city grants to enter into a loan agreement with the Environment Department for the purpose of the flooding on Washington and Jefferson Streets by Mason View and Future Foundations flooding. Future Foundations flooding, Future Foundations.
It used to play.
Yeah, it still does until we fix it.
Mayor and council, you, you guys all know we've had issues there in the past in that area and, uh, the city area this year applied for some funds for the water revolving, uh, fund, so. It's as simple as that. Uh, this will for sure get the project started. Um, and, uh, I think it'll, according to what I've seen, as far as what we applied for and, uh, scope itself, it, it should complete the project.
Questions? We'll entertain a motion for ordinance seventeen twelve twenty-four.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number seventeen twelve twenty-four.
Thank you, Mike, second.
Second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Vasquez, Councilor DeSaro?
Yes.
Councilor Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Next one. This one we did last year?
No.
Or no, this is a resolution?
Related to the ordinance.
The same.
The next one is... I'll entertain a motion for that resolution too. Fifteen seventy-six, seventeen fifteen seventy-six.
Mayor, I move to approve the resolution to seventeen dash fifteen seventy-six.
Second.
Second.
Councilor Reynolds? Senator Vasquez? Senator DeSaro? Councilor Lewis?
Yes.
Cool. Riverwalk Right-Away Trail Services, we did this last year too.
Uh, so I'm gonna need a lot of help on this one. Okay, uh, we all know there's been a lot of challenges, uh, in, in the design, uh, area of the Riverwalk Trail. Uh, I guess so many issues to where we're having to do it all over again. And instead of going to, uh, a firm that doesn't specialize in this, this Tierra Right-Away is, specializes in property acquisition. That's all they do, they, they've done all the Santa Fe Trails, Taos Trails. So whatever NMBOT requires, so what the Tierra Right-Away understands, and this is the final step to bidding. I know you guys probably have heard that before, but this is the final step to bidding. And of course, this, it will take approximately six months for this, uh, process to develop and, and be final until we go to bidding.
So Donald and I went to a meeting in October with the DOT and, um, WH Pacific, who are the engineers that have helped us with this project. And to be honest, I'm totally frustrated with this whole issue. And, um, at the meeting, I pretty much told the DOT, well, we'd probably just be better off to just give you back your money, the grant we got four years ago, and just do this with our own money by the time, you know, initially, the grant was for four hundred and some thousand for construction, the design amount was ninety thousand. And I think we're up to a hundred and seventy thousand right now for cost, city cost in design. So this is another fifty thousand, right? Fifty, close to sixty thousand?
Fifty-five.
That we're gonna be forking out. And although, you know, the DOT pretty much told me that we were gonna have to go through them probably anyway. But, um, we did appraisals back in October of two thousand and sixteen and now we've gotta do them again. And the DOT has this process from hell that I just think is ridiculous. So I'll tell you now, I will never recommend that we go after TAP funding, which is transportation alternative. And in talking with, uh, we're working with a park service gentleman who's helping us.
That's the guy I met the other day?
A televality that's helping us with, um, uh, trails planning, a master trails project. And he's working with some other communities who have TAP funding and they're experiencing the same thing. But we're at the point now, you know, Donald and I and the DOT talked and the engineers, if we back out now, we lose the hundred and seventy thousand that we've already put in. So we're so far in, we might as well finish this ridiculous thing and get our half a mile of trail that's gonna cost over a half a million, more than a half a million in the end. Um, luckily, not all of it's our money, but it's been very frustrating. And, you know, Donald and I have looked and it's like, well, is it our project's person's fault? Is it the engineer's? But I truly believe it's just the DOT process, it's ridiculous. And I understand the thought behind some of their stuff. Now, you know, initially, we thought all this property along the real San Jose would get donated by the property owners. Well, the DOT is making us do appraisals, they're making us offer the property owners what the property appraises for. And I'm praying the property owners are gonna donate it, but, you know, there's a good chance they won't now. And so, this project that should have not been such a big deal, a half a mile trail, has turned out to be a five, six-year process that I don't think we're getting what we're putting into it realistically. But at this point, if we don't move forward, then we lose what we've invested so far.
So it's either invest another fifty-five for Tierra and then we still have to do the appraisals again, which is about ten thousand. So it's either invest another sixty-five seventy and continue or...
And we have to pay for the property if the owner wants the money, then it's crazy.
Yeah, Donald and, you know, Donald knows quite a few of them, but I'm really rallying, we need to encourage them to donate. I mean, they're, in my opinion, they're junk property. I think one of the appraisals was thirty thousand for a piece of property along the ditch that nothing can be built on. And I'm like, where did the appraiser come up with thirty thousand? That's worth about three thousand.
Yeah, you get them to appraise your house and they say thirty thousand.
Yeah, these are, these are, and there's, there's trees, there's trees on there. The trees on the property that are salt cedar, by the way, or elm, which we're trying to get rid of, are worth ten thousand. The tree's worth ten thou... I don't know, it's just crazy to me, so.
And, 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 I mean, we all know the property owners, so, talked to them prior and, you know, but it's different whenever someone shows you twenty thousand appraisal and, hey, I could get twenty thousand dollars.
How many pieces are, are we, how many potential pieces?
There are twenty parcels and nine property owners.
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah.
It's maybe turning into another hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
But it's, it's five of them properties are one, the, the Bracenias, Victor and Paula Bracenia. So almost half of the properties are by one owner.
Have you heard anything from them?
All the notes that I, I haven't approached them yet, 'cause I was waiting for us to take this step, 'cause then we have a kickoff. But all the notes that I've seen is that everyone's willing to donate. Donate, but they're all willing to donate, but we haven't shown them the appraisal.
That's prior to appraisal.
You know, 'cause you gotta show them the value. It's required by law.
And we have to use the DOT's appraiser that's from who knows where, that doesn't, I have, I think has no comprehension of property and grants in New Mexico. Because thirty thousand on the ditch is crazy. When we've got parcels in North Hill selling for seven thousand, where you could build a home.
Well, yeah, I mean, and you've got Ronnie Bynes donating us ten acres on the PH. I mean, that's gotta be worth a lot more than thirty grand if they're telling us that that little piece is worth...
Yeah, so I just, I don't know, I'm very frustrated, but I think we're just gonna, you know, our best interest is to move forward. And, but, you know, we've gotta meet some deadlines and Donald's aware of that. Once you get certain things done, you only have six more months to do something else and...
There, there has, I've been informed by the DOT that there has to be some kind of construction activity by the end of next year. So that's, I mean, because I'm no expert, that's why I'm for sure recommending Tierra, because they specialize in this. So if we, you know, they do all the duct guys and across the Ts and all that. So that way, we don't have another delay postponement.
So we didn't, we didn't have another trust in Tierra that overlooked this?
Not that the DOT has approved, and they have to prove...
That's that thing with the DOT, we had the same thing on First Street, guys. We went in, we did the engineering, we did it all. They come in behind us and they tell us wrong and they make us tear out three hundred thousand dollars worth of concrete up and down the hill on both sides.
I was required to send the DOT their proposal before it came to you guys, so they've seen Tierra's proposal and approved it.
The, the state DOT guy, um, they have one person that approves all of these rightaways and I think he told us he works seven, twenty-four seven, didn't he? Twenty-four seven. And I believe it, because they require such goofy things that you'd have to, to be able to get all that approved. So as he told us, that's me, I work twenty-four seven. I'm like, ooh, okay. We're not gonna be working with you again. This is our last project with you.
So Lori, you recommending we go ahead and move forward?
I think we should, you know, I think we're gonna lose too much to lose.
I like what you said last year later, or earlier today about the phase two, we can just do ourselves.
Yeah, phase two, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna ask Wilson and Company, can we just do this ourself? Do we have to involve the DOT? Anytime I see the DOT, I'm gonna be like, no, 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 no.
You've heard me complain about that for years now.
Yeah, so, um, I mean, we have a paver now. We can, we can pave our own path down the ditch.
So these guarantee that we can, uh, get it all approved through DOT?
Yes, yes. Like I said, they've done Santa Fe Trails, uh, Taos Trails.
They got the nice trails in both them places.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve item number eight, Tierra Task, um, for the Riverwalk Trail Right-Away Service in the amount of fifty-four thousand seven eighty per second.
Councilor Reynolds? Councilor Vasquez? Rick?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
No, you just made the motion, how can you vote no? Things that vote you yes, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
You want a good one?
No, I know.
Please have all of that stuff, they hit him to jump. I thought I was the one lightheaded without the hair.
You asked me to vote.
Okay, First Street, Phase Three Engineering Design. What you whispered about the dog?
What was that last vote?
Say what?
Yes. Two, two?
No, one no.
One no.
Three twos.
Never, yes.
We would have if Mike wouldn't have changed his vote, then I'd have had to finalize it.
Oh, gosh.
Finally, First Street Reconstruction Phase, Phase Three. Mayor and council, uh, we received two price quotes and, uh, Wilson and Company was, uh, we are recommending that we award Wilson and Company the design and engineering services for First Street Phase Three from, uh, Washington to Harrison Street.
That's the last of it, right?
Yes, ma'am, the last piece for design.
From Washington to Harrison, the last piece from the road. The road to Harrison, right?
Yes, sir.
And Donald, this is MAP or road funding, right?
Uh, this one is MAP.
MAP.
That's good, 'cause we didn't budget for it. Any other questions? I like, I like using MAP money and state money and all that good stuff. So I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and get the engineering done for the rest of First Street.
I move we approve First Street Phase Three Engineering Design Services in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars to Wilsons.
It actually will be to CES.
Oh, CES, sorry.
Second. Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Vasquez? Councilor DeSaro? Councilor Lewis?
Yes.
Cool. Next. Bridge project at George Hannish, change order. There's two of them.
Yes. Okay, Mayor and council, originally, the side, uh, side, there was no sidewalk on the original street of this project, it was just a bridge, no sidewalk. We added a road and they, then we added a bridge to the, uh, east side of the bridge, but there was no... but there was no sidewalk on the west side. We had someone come before the council a month ago, month and a half ago, and asked about it. Anyway, we've received some prices from the engineer and the construction company on the George Hanish Project. And this is to add a sidewalk on the east side of the bridge. No, west side, west side.
The west side.
West side of the bridge, yes. You've got structures in Brenneal. And the first item on the agenda is for, is it engineering or compass?
It's compass.
Good, compass, yeah. And then Wilson and company afterwards for the engineering services. Mario's here for Wilson, obviously, can you answer any questions?
I have a question, I'm interested in the railing. If it is, if option two is selected, how sturdy is the pedestrian railing?
So, the pedestrian railing that you're looking there is a standardized railing that would be used on any, any NMBOD bridge. So, it's still pipe railing, we actually have a subtle detail, but it's more than adequate for the pedestrians. So, I just wanted to reassure you of that.
Okay, I don't want it to be flimsy.
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, it will not be. And we put together the illustration, it's just different view angles, but we really wanted the council to sort of have a sense of what that final, you know, object would look like when, when we add the sidewalk to the current box covert.
This is helpful, very helpful.
So, the sidewalk on the east side?
Will be on the other side of the concrete. Yeah, the one on the west side will have a concrete barrier with the curb.
So, the, okay, so the sidewalk will not be extended towards Santa Fe Avenue?
Yes.
So, Mayor and Council, as, as Don had pointed out earlier, last council meeting, there was some concern with the public that we're, one particular resident, that we have sidewalk on the east side.
Right.
And, and the manager acknowledged that the city was programming into fiscal year 2018 sidewalks. This particular area was, was one of the projects selected for sidewalk. At that, at that time, a few days afterwards, the manager and staff had asked our office, what would, you know, could we, could we wait to install all of the sidewalk next year or to do it now? And so, what we recommended is at a minimum, install the sidewalk at the box covert now. Okay, that's the price that you have before you. And the sidewalk on the west side, if this is approved, then we will move forward to acquiring sidewalk easements and or right away. One, one or the other. We're not working with federal funding. We're not working with federal funding, so, so we're not going to have a type of...
Here's the problem with that, with this project, guys. Is when it was designed, towards Harry Garcia's garage, we own about fifty feet. Almost right up to his building. Well, instead of designing it and realigning the road with the bridge the way it should be with our right away, it was placed right against the property line on the west side. And no easement was moved into Harry's property whatsoever, well, our Harry's property, into our easement whatsoever. And that's why we got stuck with that, okay? Is because when they originally did it, they didn't take the time to realign the road within our right aways. They put that road right up against the west property boundary, where the curb is right up against that boundary, and where we've got almost fifty-five feet on the other side that is nothing on it. So, our recommendation here is to sell that property to Harry to pay for the sidewalk and the bridge.
That's not part of this cost, too?
No, no. Because we'll have to get the appraisal, and then Harry will have to agree to buy the property, which I'm sure he will, because he always parks eighteen wheelers there when they wreck and sells food out of it or whatnot. And we can't have that going on on city property without having him pay us to do it.
Make sure you get the same appraisal and appraise the ditch.
You know, this way, and this way, when we sell Harry, because I know Harry will buy the property, and that'll pay for the cost of the bridge to fix the sidewalk on that side. That's what we were thinking, we walked down there, we looked at it. Me and Laura, Les, Donald, we were all down there, we walked it, we looked at it. And, I mean, that would be my recommendation, guys, to sell that property to Harry.
This sidewalk doesn't go to Santa Fe Avenue.
Not right now, it's just across the bridge.
The decision point is, do we put it on the, on the, on the west side? And if we do, then it triggers what the mayor just described.
And we need it on the west side too, guys. I mean, they come out, if they're going to the Lotte Burger, they're going to Canton, they're going to the video place, any of them places that they're walking down that way from. And it only makes sense. So, that's my recommendation, guys. And as soon as we approve this, then we can go ahead and move Laura to get an appraisal, and we'll move with Representative Garcia to buy that property, and that'll counter what we're paying for this project. So, it's my recommendation that we go with it. Questions?
So, what's the total cost on?
Twenty-six thousand on this change order is twenty-six thousand five hundred.
Plus tax, I believe, Mayor.
Plus tax?
Without tax, yeah.
So, that's the total, plus the taxes. Correct.
So, be twenty-six five plus the tax, whatever the tax is. So, I'll entertain a motion for twenty-six five to Compass Engineering and Construction Services LLC plus tax, whatever the tax comes up to be. Could I have a motion?
I move that we approve change order to Compass Engineering and Construction Services LLC in the amount of twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars plus tax.
Thank you. Second. Just like the, thank you, Rick. Councilor Reynolds.
Yes.
Councilor Vazquez, Councilor Lewis.
Yes.
Councilor De Sero.
Yes.
Thank you, guys, very much. The next one is for the engineering services to do this. It's basically the same thing, except it's for three thousand. Did you include taxes in yours?
Yes, I think so.
We normally do so.
I looked at Jersey, it did say, it did say, which includes Mexico GRT.
Yes, it does.
Thank you, Ms. Bennet.
Yes.
So, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve item number eleven, Engineering Services for the added sidewalk.
And it's to CES.
Yeah. Three thousand six hundred eighty-three twenty-three, which includes tax.
Thank you. Councilor Reynolds.
Yes.
Councilor Vazquez, Councilor De Sero, Councilor Lewis.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mario.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Fix my brain, Mario.
Absolutely.
I'll agree. The next ones are the municipal election resolutions.
So, one thing new that we're trying in our voting for this next election is to have what's called voter convenience centers. And what that does is people can vote at any of the centers, so that you don't have to go to a set place, because you probably are all where people get confused, where do I vote? And it changes. So, we're looking at having three places.
Three, instead of four.
City Hall, Future Foundation's Family Center, and the CAP Office on Elm. And so, we will be set up that anybody could vote at any of those three.
You know, because right now, guys, at Futures, you've got districts two and four, I believe, that vote. Districts two and three that vote in the same place anyway. They're just at a different table in the same room. So, this cuts down on election employees, monitors, whatever you want to call it, that we have to have, election officials to watch it. And, I mean, it would just be simpler to go to any place, vote and get on the road.
And early voting and absentee ballot will be at City Hall prior. But, yeah, we're hoping this just cuts down on the confusion. And we took out the Mount Taylor one because it's harder to get on the school campus.
Yes, with school going on.
Parking.
You could just do it there at Elm Street, on one of our places. Okay? Any questions on this? I'll entertain a motion on seventeen fifteen seventy-five.
I make a motion for resolution seventeen dash fifteen seventy-five for municipal election on March sixth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Second.
Councilor Reynolds.
Yes.
Councilor Vazquez, Councilor De Sero.
Yes.
Councilor Lewis.
Yes.
Second one, seventeen fifteen seventy-five alpha.
The same resolution, but in Spanish.
I make a motion to approve.
Do it in Spanish.
Say it in Spanish.
Second.
La resolución diecisiete quince setenta y cinco alfa.
Good job, baby. Second. Second, okay, Councilor Reynolds.
Yes.
Councilor Vazquez. Councilor Rick. Councilor Mike.
Si.
Laura, you got anything?
Um, I just wanted to make sure that the council knows, it looks like we're going to schedule a meeting December twenty-eighth. Continental Divide has been working with us. They want us to pass an ordinance to do a lead-up ordinance for their new broadband program that they're starting up, for the fees for that, and to give them a break on the initial franchise fees for a couple of years while they get that program up and running. The broadband location for their new facility will be in the industrial park, and that will be to our benefit because that's the area where we, there's property for businesses to move in. We have broadband specifically in that location. It will help facilitate possibly some new businesses coming into that area because that's what they're looking for.
They're going to build it?
They are going to build a new office in that area. They've purchased land, and it's not necessarily official, but Sebola Foundation owns that property. And they have indicated to me, Sebola Foundations are the ones that donated the Alco Building to the city for the library. They said if that sale goes through, that they are looking at donating the money from the sale of that property to the city for the other half of the library.
Will we decide we want to get incubator in there, what we're going to do?
All that kind of stuff.
Business. Cool.
So, we wanted you to know, and I'll send you an email put down December twenty-eighth, most likely we'll be having a meeting that evening.
I mean, the only way that we won't have that meeting, guys, is if they don't have their crap together with their ordinance and everything that they need to do. I mean, but I told Laura and I told all the staff at the city to just plan on having a whole home meeting on twenty. Is everybody time to get home before after Christmas? And time to get it done before New Year's, okay? Councilor and Councilor Mike?
Good.
Rick? Manny?
Main Street, awesome job, Main Street. Where you going?
I want to wish you a happy holiday.
Thank you. Uh, Main Street, fantastic job, guys. I appreciate what you do, the veterans love it. Thank you very much.
Best of your year.
Kathy, thank you for covering the haircut and getting it in the paper. Channel ten, Barbara's not here, make sure you tell Barbara they're cameraman. Thank her for coming down and filming it and putting it on channel ten. And tell her that I want to copy it, okay? Thank you, guys, I'll entertain a motion at close to speed.
Make a motion.
Second. All the favors say aye. Have a good night, thank you, guys. Merry Christmas!
Merry Christmas!